You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
All county offices will be closed July 4th in observance of the 4th of July holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, July 5th, 2018.
Beginning June the 27th, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrants list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call 546-2093 or visit epcounty.com and click on "Operations Safe Streets."
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including El Paso County, and whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the county recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Commissioners Court recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in El Paso County, signed the second day of July 2018 by the honorable members of the County Commissioners Court.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director, and first I would like to introduce our guests that we have with us.
Morning, I'm Juan Salas, I'm president of the Scout at the Fishing Club.
Good morning, I'm Christina Cordoba, I'm the secretary for the Scout at the Fishing Club.
Yubelava Parks and Recreation.
Cesar Jimenez, Special Events Coordinator.
Claudia Fernandez, Sports Park.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. Ben Weiss, Special, Ben Weiss Parks and Rec.
Morning.
Judge and Commissioners, Alexandra South, Marketing Specialist with Parks and Recreation.
Thank you all for being here this morning.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you again for all your support of Parks and Recreation. We have a lot of activities happening to hopefully connect, like we said, the community to parks. And we're gonna start, of course, with the 4th of July, which is its own special event in itself, and we're very excited to host the many people that will be coming. We will have a free outdoor movie, July 14th, at Gagos Park in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. On July 13th, we're gonna have a free skills challenge to kick off our youth, our very first, Eight and Under Summer Celebration of Youth Tournament at the sports park. So that'll be on the 14th and the 15th, and that'll be $200 per team. And on the July 21st, we're gonna have our first county catfish classic in collaboration with the Scout at the Fishing Club, in which it'll be for a $20 donation to the fishing club and in a collaboration with us. We're gonna have another free outdoor movie at Rizenger Park in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. And we're gonna have another free outdoor movie, July 27th, at Scout at the Park. And also that evening, we'll have a campout at Scout at the Park in collaboration with the City of El Paso Parks and Recreation Department as well. So we invite you to all of our activities that we're gonna be having, we'll be getting posters up later this week and getting you all the information.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate all that you have done. I know that in the short time that you've been here, Ms. Meyer, and you have a great team of folks that have been supportive and helping you get that done, but we've seen quite a bit come out of that office, and so thank you for all the ideas, the collaboration, and the effort that all of you are putting into these really great events that are really helping bring attention to our wonderful asset in the heart of our community. And all the other parks, which for such a long time had not received the type of attention and planning and events that we're starting to see now. So I'm really excited to hear that Gagos Park, for example, will have a movie night and other activities throughout the year. So, thanks.
And Ms. Meyer, again, thank you very much, and I've gotta say, we can have the nicest sports park, the nicest lake, the nicest of everything, but if the people that work in those facilities don't mesh with our customers, we wouldn't be successful. As you know, we were out at the sports park this weekend, and what a turnout. It was great, and I've gotta really give some kudos to Claudio, Ben, and Desiree, and we had a caller that called, also gave a lot of kudos to the tall guy, whoever that might be.
Joel.
Joel, and don't kid yourself, it looks a little empty here, you might think that everybody's watching the game, but they're tuned in to this. And can you just go over again, the 4th of July fireworks for our listeners?
Yes, so the 4th of July is on Wednesday, we open the gates at 5:30 a.m. The gates will close at 10 p.m. for that day. It's $5 entry fee, but when you, once you're in the park, there'll be three live bands that'll be playing, starting at 3 p.m. In the park area, they'll be free and available for everybody, along with some activities for the kids. And then we're gonna, at the golf course, we'll have, I'm sorry, the swimming pool will be open from 12 to 5 for a regular swim session, and then we're adding an additional swim session in the evening from 6 to 9 p.m. And then at the golf course, we're having a skills challenge and a VIP area for $30 per person, and so there'll be another live band there at the golf course, and it'll include a meal, a cheeseburger, fries, and a drink, and VIP seating for $30.
And the actual fireworks?
And you can rent, the shelters are available on a first come, first served basis, however, if anybody would want to reserve one, rent one, they are available for rental, and we are already up to about 14 rentals.
And the actual fireworks start at what time?
The actual fireworks start at 9:30 p.m.
Thank you, and all of you, thank you for being here this morning, and great job, because you are what draws our folks to those parks, not the park itself. Thank you.
Yes, we couldn't do it without the amazing staff that we have, and all the partners that we have, like the Fishing Club and all the other partners, the Texas Parks and Wildlife, they'll have four game wardens there on the 4th of July as well. So we wanna thank them.
I also wanna thank the Parks Team for all the work they've done. Veronica Myers was my speaker last week at my west side meeting, and just did a fantastic job of updating the community about what they're doing and all the great things that are happening. So I wanna thank you and all of you for all you've done. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number five, public comment. We have signed up one member of the public, Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadiga. Morning, Mr. Uzadiga.
Judge, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. How do we get to $320 million, tax dollars, every month? How? I've come up here for a handful of years and have thrown that out. How do we get that? I'm sure you guys have asked yourselves that. So what I did, in recognition of July 4th, I kinda, I don't know, maybe it's cheesy, maybe it's not, I think of it as part of my work, I have drawn up a, or the ideal act. It's the answer to the question of how do we get to $320 million every month? And so I came up with the Cannabis and Organics Act of 2018. Now just roll with me, okay, ladies and gentlemen, roll with me. Remove cannabis, marijuana, and hemp, both tetrahydrocannabinol and cannabinoids, from the Controlled Substances Act via executive order by our 45th President, so that Americans and/or any person who is 18 years of age or older are legally permissible to produce, distribute, sell, purchase, and/or possess THC in the United States of America. Moreover, no age requirement is necessary to purchase and/or possess CBD in the United States of America. The federal legalization of opium, poppy, peyote, mushrooms, and kratom must also be recognized by removal from the Controlled Substances Act via executive order. You must be 18 years of age or older to produce, distribute, sell, purchase, and/or possess poppy, peyote, slicobin mushrooms, and kratom. Any and all producers, distributors, and sellers of cannabis, opium, peyote, mushrooms, kratom must be registered and licensed, which is to be available to both the commercial and residential sectors of the United States with authorization by the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA, their marketing and regulatory programs. Also, expunges of criminal charges and convictions to all persons of related crimes are to be abolished from all records on file, and done so with the aid of a federal department or agency. This is to be a free service and activated only by the registration of the offender. So ladies and gentlemen, basically what I read is, how do we get to that $320 million? You have to legalize all organics. Separate synthetics, artificials from organics. And you slap on the USDA label on all organics. All regulatory and enforcement will be done by the USDA, not so much criminal enforcement, this is more agricultural enforcement, making sure plants are being grown properly, making sure mushrooms are being grown properly, that's an alternative source. If I'm a patient, and I have bad health, poor health, I would rather resort to alternative organics, or straight over-the-counter organics, versus the artificial synthetics pills. If you're popping pills, you're a sucker. If you got an orange bottle and it's got a white cap with a label, you're a sucker for taking those pills. I don't know if you know this, but I have some farmasuruko and nutrusuruko, excuse me, experience. And so that experience brings me to this point, this is my gift to the state of Texas, because this issue is unconstitutional by Texas standard and American standard. And so I wanna leave this gift, you know, in recognition of July 4th. Hopefully, our 45th President could look at it, hopefully Governor Abbott could look at it, hopefully you all could look at it seriously in the next seven days, and really begin to take that into consideration, because that's what we need to do. So until next week, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your years, God bless America, and we'll see you next time. And my daughter Riley, we'll see you soon, baby, I love you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Bishop Uzadiga. If you wanna give that to Mr. Bishop, he can take that. Yeah. Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Judge you too, thank you.
I believe that's it for public comment, Mr. Nola.
Thank you Judge. This brings us to item number six, judiciary corrections. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the revised grant application submitted to the Texas Veterans Commission Fund for Veterans Assistance, El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Grant. Further authorize the county judge to sign the notice of grant award in the amount of $300,000 for the grant cycle beginning July 7th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. There is no county match required. is no county match required. Contract number 2018-0381.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge and County Commissioner Sylvia Serna for Veterans Program. Two items on this agenda. Like Mr. Navas said, is first, accept the revised application. We initially submitted that application back in September of 2017. The Texas Veterans Commission staff requested that. We add additional information and also make some minor revisions, but it did not alter the concept of the actual application. Nonetheless, they wanted us to be in compliance with their standards. The second item is to accept the $300,000 grant award. That is the largest grant we have received to date. The grant is going to fund, for an entire year, the positions of a full-time counselor, full-time probation officer, full-time counselor and compliance officer, and a part-time deputy sheriff's officer. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
Item number seven, health and social services. Item number seven has a correction for us to read in from the Veterans Assistance Department. Item should read, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the revised grant application for the fiscal year 2018-2019 Texas Veterans Commission General Assistance Grant, and further authorize the county judge to sign the notice of grant award to provide rental and utility assistance to veterans, veterans dependents, and veterans surviving spouses in our community in the amount of $200,000 for the term beginning July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. There is no county match required. Contract number 2018-0387. Aye.
Your Honor, Commissioners, good morning. A little bit of a repeat of what Sylvia just said. We had to readjust the approved loan that was submitted last October. There were a couple of issues that they had. It was pre-approved, but they wanted us to adjust some of the wording with requirements for individuals that would be eligible for the award, and then also a more broken-down example of how we were going to use the funding. So it didn't take away from any of the previous wording or anything of that nature to, you know, take away from what was signed. This is a $200,000 grant. The highest grant that we'd previously received was $100,000 last year. So we're very excited to get this started and to start assisting veterans and dependents in the area, and among other things lighten the burden on general assistance. It will be specifically for rent and utility assistance for those who are currently in need. And there, as mentioned, there's no match, and the funds, all $200,000 of it, will go straight to supporting veterans. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Item number eight, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number eight, approve and authorize the Public Works Department to apply to the Texas Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2018 Section 5339 Formula Grant for funds in the amount of $555,702. The purpose of the grant is to provide capital equipment that will support continued commuter bus service from rural El Paso County to the city of El Paso. The grant period is for one year. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the certificate of obligation as a requirement of the grant. Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner, sell loans to Public Works Department. The signing before you is a grant, 5339. This would go towards, to be used for a match on a different grant that we acquired earlier this year that we'll be bringing up before the court hopefully next month, and the remaining balance would go towards purchase of a couple of additional buses. Staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions on your behalf.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Leon?
The amount against L is how much?
$550,702. $555,502, sorry.
$555,502. And I've got a question on the...
Yes, sir.
Wally, this is probably more for you. Reference the signing of the COs to back up the grant. How does that work?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Wally Hargrove from the Office of the County Budget and Fiscal Policy. So this is just to approve and authorize the judge to sign those certificates of obligation as a requirement of the grant, just indicating the county's willingness to back this program and complete the construction in partnership with a tech stop. No additional liability.
Now, the COs, are they only a guarantee, or just...
Correct.
So there's no match at all?
No, sir. No, sir. 100% funds come to the county and we can use them.
So the CO is only a matter of a guarantee? I don't understand why the county judge would have to sign those COs.
I'd have to look a little more at the backup really quickly to see what the technical commitment is. I know there's no fiscal commitment.
The COs on this one, the COs on this is typically on all tech dot grant projects. You see this in whether it's a match or no match on the grant, but this is a typical item that is inserted as part of the grant application and acceptance of the funds.
It's a routine item in these types of grants?
That is correct.
No motion made yet, Commissioner.
One second.
And I did reread that it's merely a certification on behalf of the county.
Okay, thank you, Wally.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Item number nine, budget and finance. Approve and authorize the capital improvement interim request from facilities maintenance in the amount of $68,750 for the replacement of windows at the county jails.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This item is approving the interim allocation of $68,750 for the replacement of some windows that have been broken by inmates at the county, two county jails. This was part of the FY19 CIP request and is part of the committee's recommendation to fund. However, we just recently underwent an inspection by the Commission on Jail Standards, and it was a recommendation of their team that we expedite the replacement of these windows. With that, we're asking for your favorable consideration hereafter for FY19 as part of the operating budget. We're going to work closely with the administrative staff of the sheriffs at the jails to look at what the, unfortunately, it's sort of normal wear and tear. It makes them want to be in their cells. They pick things up, break the windows. We're going to look at and see if we can develop a budget line item for more budget, normal, routine window replacement. So we're going to get a, see if we can get a break history on that and have it come directly from the sheriff's budget as a budgeted line item on a normal basis. Would ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10, approve amendment number 38 to the County of El Paso's 2018-2017-2018 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will not increase or decrease the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 overall operating budget of $486,933,574.83.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Sent you an email this morning. We are adding one line item to correct this BA. We previously had done a budget amendment 35 on Journal 146. We had transferred $28,500 into facilities, operational supplies, and that should have been categorized as facilities, capital improvement, renovation. So I sent you an email this morning and also copied the clerk of the court, and are asking to add that to today's BA. With that, we would ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve. Commissioner Perez?
Well, there was one transfer, I think, of, from detention, I believe, from, to another line item. Could you just...
Yes, for maintenance and repair. This is for some maintenance, for the downtown facility.
I think it was to CID. I think it goes from detention to CID.
Enforcement at J. Lanex, and let me see real fast. Yes, we did have a transfer. So during the course of the year, in accordance with our collective bargaining agreement, as individuals depart ways with the county through retirement or termination, they are paid out their accrued vested benefits, and this is transferring $30,000 out of the downtown detention facility into the CID division to cover vested benefits for officers that retired from that division.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This brings us to executive session. Item number 11. Commissioners' Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 11A through 11C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Thank you.